I didn't print extra ones today. I have an extra one, hang on, you can remind.
You don't, no PJ, you don't. I appreciate that, but not, not for this. You want to save it for later. Now Bruce has been gone.
You're gonna need to have your mom staple it, but you are right here at the.
Four and six now. They just.
Are they interested in doing this?
Yeah, yeah, probably, um. Yeah, they could do it. Yeah.
They've been here when the others have done it, so they'll be.
Yeah, yeah, they, they enjoy it. Yeah, Atlas could do it. Inzo and.
Hello, we're testing. Hello, we're testing. Yeah, isn't that exciting?
Yeah.
Hi Nico.
Hey, how you doing?
Search is still open.
Well, good.
I left the message. Do you guys love those, that shade twisted upwards or anything? It's not like super, oh, it's getting joy. There we go.
Wine by the light.
Okay. There's a song like that, I think. Okay, so do we wait, do we start?
Uh, let's give it, because of the construction outside, let's give it until six oh five.
Sounds good. Oh, I, all I saw was PJ's head, I was like, who's over there? Because from the back, it looked like an adult sitting down.
They'll be working up. I'm out.
Like what city employees work past five?
They're taking way more space than there were, they were earlier.
Think they must have another job lined up. We're gonna, now, yes.
Eno said, who is everybody?
So professional.
You may actually have it on the floor.
Yeah.
I'll take it.
Yeah. What do we do if Pat doesn't make it?
Um, we could, we proceed.
Okay.
Because Dave can present this one as well. Pat's here for advice. At all times, but we, we can proceed.
Okay. We can.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we could do the B session first.
Hmm, we could, we could.
And here is someone over for Pat.
I don't think I do.
Joyce, Pat does know. Close, Pat does know closed session starts at six.
That's what they're sort of checking on right now. Well, he should know, but, um, I don't know if he knows or not. Let's hope he knows. I mean, he's, I'm assuming he'll, I'm gonna be, uh, at the close.
Yeah.
Well, if he comes in good ones, she gets started.
Oh, Peter. Susan Peters will be here. Not at the meeting room, sure.
Yeah, sorry, I saw that text. Well, I'm gonna answer back. I'll deal with it.
Oh, I did, okay, I.
She's texting both of us.
Oh.
Falling apart.
Welcome to, welcome to city government. That's her office number.
No, I don't have a number.
All right.
Okay, then you silence my phone.
Yes, what do you know? Hasn't anybody gotten all the Bruce?
I left the message. I called the first, Fred said, if you don't answer, you can call this number. So I called the second number, left a message.
Okay, I'll try it. Oh, you tried them both?
I did, yeah.
Okay, I'll text because sometimes that works.
I don't know which one does a cell phone, which one.
Are you looking for Pat's number?
No, Bruce, you have Pat's number?
Uh-huh.
You have a cell number or just a two, two, three? What do you got, Susan?
Two oh four.
Oh, that's a cell number. What you got, Susan? Two oh nine?
Two nine, three oh four, seven, three, five, five.
Save that, save that, write it down, Tim.
That's safe. Would you go on your way? Okay. All right, we, we don't start again.
Yeah, we can switch it and Pat doesn't come. It sounds like he is, um. We just go without. The kind of group of advice we might get is here.
Correct. But like time went south, but we should get started.
We can do. Okay. So do, for protocol, meeting will come to order at six ten. Uh, go ahead with, with roll call.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. We'll begin our regular scheduled council meeting on March twentieth, twenty twenty-five here in Amador City as it is six ten.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, roll call, um, council member Ingles.
Here.
Council member Braxton.
Here.
Council member, number Sally.
Present.
Council member, uh, Staples.
Present.
And then councilman Cheryl is absent. Uh, we also have in the gallery, we have city clerk, Joyce Davidson and myself, Dick Roth, as city administrator. May I now turn the time over to you?
Thank you very much. So we have a quorum. Um, we are gonna start tonight with flag salute. And Patricia Jane Trump is here tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the revolution for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, PJ. We're gonna be entering closed session, so we'll excuse those who are not involved. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you.
The open session takes seven, seven.
Seven. Thank you so much.
Good morning.
We're gonna begin with closed session, beauty pass on. Thank you. With session B, just to give time for Bruce to be here. We're gonna begin with closed se- oh, are we recording? Hold on. Okay.
Right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll be in closed session. We'll be back in session seven o'clock this evening. Please join us then.
Okay, video and audio are back on.
Hasn't been working the last.
Video and audio are back on is some conversation about this.
Oh yeah, for sure.
Works out working in the bathroom.
Uh, I do, well, the water wasn't for a while, like two months ago, but I think the water's back on, right? Water's back on?
We are not, we are not insured for any public being anywhere in this hallway in this room.
Do we need a porta potty?
Well, that's it. Right there is our bathroom.
Yeah.
But we might when in first construction.
Yeah.
Or they're gonna have.
Oh, they'll probably bring a porta potty in for the construction.
Or see, that's what.
Nobody would be up here by construction.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for the use.
Now you have two seven hundred years to.
Okay.
First, you see, you got three.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight. We're going to reconvene our city council meeting and to report out from closed session. With regard to closed session eight, there is nothing to report out at this time. Report out of closed session B, council made a motion and approved a resolution to approve a compensation increase for our city plant operator. And that amount is $150 per month beginning July 1st.
If that is the, I'm sorry.
B, nothing to report out on A.
Oh.
Compensation for the sewer plant in all directions. Yes. Beginning July 1st of 2025 of $150 per month. Okay, and with that, um, in the packet there was correspondence notice and we're moving on to approval of city council regular meeting agenda for tonight, 20th of March, 2025. For anyone who needs a copy, there's a post, a sign in the back on how to download it digitally if you have a smart device with you. Or you can request a copy on Monday from our city council, uh, from our city clerk, um, if needed. So with that, we need to have a motion from council to approve the city council regular meeting agenda for tonight.
Don't move.
Thank you, Susan. Is there a second?
Seven seconds.
Rochelle, second. So with the motion to approve the agenda and a second, we will do roll call vote. Susan?
I.
Bruce?
I.
Nico?
Melanie?
I.
Randy, I. So that's five zero zero. The motion is approved. And we will continue with the meeting. We're going to be moving on to public comment tonight. Um, individuals come to the public comment. They come to be heard. They come to speak. And in that regard, we're going to ask everyone to be respectful of every person's right to speak and to be heard. And therefore there'll be no cheering, no shouting, no clapping. It'll be quiet, respectful, listening to anyone who comes up to the podium to address city council. Um, under provisions of the California code, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time. State your name, residential address, group affiliation, if any, for the record. Limit comments to five minutes or less. Under provisions of the California government code, the city council cannot take action unless an urgent need arose after posting of the agenda. And if individuals would please pick up a comment card and hand that to our city clerk on the way up to our, our podium here. If there's any public comment tonight. Kirk?
Okay, video and audio are back on.
It hasn't been working the last.
Video and audio are back on is some conversation about this.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
What's happening in the bathroom?
Uh, I do, well, the water wasn't for a while, like two months ago, but I think the water's back on, right? Water's back on?
We are not, that we are not insured for any public being anywhere in this hallway in this room.
Do we need a porta potty?
Well, that's it. Right there is our bathroom.
Yeah.
But we might win first construction.
Yeah.
Or they're gonna have.
Oh, they'll probably bring a porta potty in for the construction.
Or see, that's nobody will be up here by construction.
Larry, Larry, we got a chair for Larry. Larry, we have a chair for you, Larry. Larry. You could, or you can sit next to Dave.
Which.
No, he's not. Wait for Melanie. Okay, thank you all for coming tonight. We're going to reconvene our city council meeting and to report out from closed session. With regard to closed session eight, there is nothing to report out at this time. Report out of closed session B, council made a motion and approved a resolution to approve a compensation increase for our city plant operator. And that amount is $150 per month beginning July 1st. B, nothing to report out on A.
Compensation for the sewer plant.
Yes. Beginning July 1st of 2025 of $150 per month. Okay, and with that, um, in the packet there was correspondence notice. And we're moving on to approval of city council regular meeting agenda for tonight, 20th of March, 2025. For anyone who needs a copy, there's a post, a sign in the back on how to download it digitally if you have a smart device with you. Or you can request a copy on Monday from our city council, uh, from our city clerk. If needed, so with that, we need to have a motion from council to approve the city council regular meeting agenda for tonight.
Don't move.
Thank you, Susan. Is there a second?
Seven, dude.
Michelle, second. So with the motion to approve the agenda and a second, we will do roll call vote. Susan?
I.
Bruce?
I.
Nico? Melanie?
I.
Sandy, I. So that's five, zero, zero. The motion is approved. And we will continue with the meeting. We're going to be moving on to public comment tonight. Um, when individuals come to the public comment, they come to be heard, they come to speak. And in that regard, we're going to ask everyone to be respectful of every person's right to speak and to be heard. And therefore there'll be no cheering, no shouting, no clapping. It'll be quiet, respectful, listening to anyone who comes up to the podium to address city council. Um, under provisions of the California code, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time. State your name, residential address, group affiliation, if any, for the record. Limit comments to five minutes or less. Under provisions of the California government code, the city council cannot take action unless an urgent need arose after posting of the agenda. And if individuals would please pick up a comment card and hand that to our city clerk on the way up to our, our podium here. If there's any public comment tonight. You're the first to use our little podium here. Come on up. Of course not.
No, but it really is.
I'm Kirk Lindsay, live at 14461 West School Street, just down the road. And I'm a resident of Amherst County, and I have no affiliation other than the resident. So let me summarize what's on the handout. Our kitchen window looks directly down West School Street. And we've noticed for quite a while that cars park within the 15-foot exclusion zone at the fire hydrant, at the bottom of the street. So I am, I've cited the California vehicle code. I've suggested that the city council could either have two signs that say no parking between signs. And that would rectify people parking there, which they regularly do. And because fire safety is really key as this project that's going on in West School Street to increase flow to the fire hydrant in this part of town, I thought this would be a good time to suggest that we have some signs.
Okay, thank you, Kirk.
You know, we paint, we painted that curb area red a few years ago, but it gets covered with leaves and needles and just gets covered with dirt.
And people don't pay attention.
And I don't, I don't pay attention, but I just parked to get my mail and I apologize.
Who's on? I, I don't know, uh, what, can this be agendized or?
I was just gonna ask you, would you like it on the agenda?
Or it's such an easy thing. It could just be done.
Okay, well, can, at this point, I'm going to put it on for an agenda item. Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Kirk. Okay. Is there any other public comment this evening? Yeah.
I tried to charge my electric vehicle down to the electric charging station and indicated that there's some kind of renewal that needs to be done by the city. And since I, I, I'm sure I'm not the only person using it, tourists using stuff, that might be something to look into. It doesn't require council action. I just wanted to bring the council's attention.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, noted those two things. Is there any other public comment this evening? Okay, public comment will be closed and we'll move on to the consent calendar items. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the city council and are enacted by one motion in the form listed. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless before council votes on the motion to adopt. Members of the council, staff, or public requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action. The two items on the consent agenda are the regular meeting agenda, minutes of 20 February 2025. And, and number three in our packets, the financial report. So any questions on either of these to be pulled out separately or to be consented to in one single motion? Which one? Motion to approve both items in a single vote. Is there a second to Bruce's motion? There's been a motion to approve the consent calendar items and a second, we'll vote on it. Any other comments? We'll vote by roll call vote. Susan?
I.
Bruce?
I.
Nico?
I.
Melanie?
I.
Sandy, I. And the consent calendar is approved five, zero, zero. And we'll move on to regular agenda items. For each agenda item, the item will be read. And then the individual who, who put it forth will do additional report or details. There'll be questions from council members that will close and then will be open to public comment on that agenda item. That will close and we'll come back for deliberation. So that will be the sequence we'll go through for each item. The first item is item four in our agenda packets. And it is a project, historical city properties discussion only. By Lizzie Groff, vice chair and Melanie Anguiz, chair and council member. And there are three attachments in the packet in that regard. So Lizzie, would you come on up to our podium, please?
Well, Lizzie's coming up, I'll just go ahead and say, um, the money that, the donation that Lizzie's gonna talk about was donated by Claudine Burnett's. Part of the funds that she has received from selling her a book about Amador City haunting history. And we just are lucky to have such a great resident here in Amador City.
Beyond.
Yeah, Lizzie, you want to share our information?
Um, for historical city properties, we are looking for open calls for proposals. A generous committee member has donated funds to the city dedicated exclusively to enchanting Amador City's historical properties. Seeking innovative projects, we are looking for creative proposals that help preserve, maintain, or promote one or more of city, Amador City's historic sites. How to apply for funding, visit www.amadorcity.com for submission guidelines and application details. Deadline proposals must be submitted by April 15th, 2025. Make some marks on Amador City's future.
Okay, and this is a sample of what Lizzie and the committee have put up around town and in Sutter Creek, and well done. Thank you, Lizzie.
Thank you, Lizzie.
Oh. Do we have any questions for Lizzie?
I have a question. If we submit something, what, what do we do with them?
It's an online submission form, and at the very end, if you want to do it in paper, because there's a paper copy for you, Susan, you give it to Melanie. And Melanie and Lizzie will bring it to their committee. Am I right on that? I should have let Lizzie answer that. She knows. Sorry. Thank you, Lizzie. Thank you. Okay. Item five. Oh, I'm sorry. Lizzie, I do have a question to ask you. I'm sorry. Would you put these up in town at tomorrow or Friday? Thank you. Okay, those are the wagon train flyers, which we'll talk about later, but Lizzie will be leaving, so I had to catch her. Okay, item five, sewer, sewer infrastructure, presentation of possible action by motion and council vote regarding needed infrastructure and maintenance for the sewer system. And it'd be Grant Reynolds and Greg Wood. The attachments are a summation of a meeting that Dave Groff, Grant, and Greg had with, and I joined in on of the conversations we had, which I'm presuming will be a lot of the information you are going to share tonight with us. So I turn it.
At this point, I'll turn that time over to, to Grant, right? Uh, any comments? Yeah. I mean, unless you want me to go ahead.
No, we want to. Yeah.
So I included your packet. Oh, I'm Grant Reynolds, city sewer engineer, and Greg Wood is our operator. Um, in your packet, there was a memo that Mayor Staples put back together after a meeting. And we had discussed some things that kind of been, you know, maintenance has been put off and put off and put off. And so we're kind of getting down to the point where some of it needs to be taken care of, or at least us go ahead and get bids and put things together, and then you can make a decision on whether or not we want to spend the money for the site. The first one we went through was the influent meter down at the plant. It was installed, I believe, in like 2007, one we have right now, and it, it doesn't seem to stay calibrated for very long. And so we were having troubles with it also, and we're having pump problems down at the, at the pump station. And then we were getting some bad readings. I think Greg's been working with the calibration company, and it's kind of coming along.
Yeah, I got the influent number down, cut in half now, closer to where it should be.
So we're, we're watching that, and if, you know, if we can get it to work to where we don't, you know, need to replace it, we won't, but it's just kind of come up on the screen. Item number two, we have there is the software. We have software that kind of runs our pumps right now and runs the aerator. And so Greg has checked in with the software company to see if we can get an addition on a timer for the aerator. Because the aerator is probably one, one with the pumps is one of my largest energy drains down there. And so if we can cut the runtime down and still get it to perform what we need it to perform just by using some software to turn it on and off during the days, probably going to end up saving us some money with PG&E. And so I, I think, if you put it, you got a quote.
It's in the, it's in the.
Well, it says one to three generally.
Yeah, and but the real, that was an estimate.
That was an estimate. I think there's a real estimate from the.
3,700.
And so we can probably do a little bit more analysis, try to see when all that savings would be realized, if you'd like us to. Where we can move forward and have the software put in. Okay, the next item was, was the filters and the pumps down at the pump station. We were having troubles with the pumps down at the pump station because we were having trouble filtering out everything from the influence that was coming into the pump stations. So we had gotten a bid from a filter company, and we started working with them. Well, as they started to do their work, they came back to us and mentioned that they couldn't do the work. Because they didn't feel they could come up with a good enough method to filter out what we are sending through our pump station. So they refunded our money. So that filter company was, it was pretty hard to even find them, so we instead of starting to look for one yet, we did a little more work around the pump station and around the pond. And found that our screening wasn't quite sitting in, in the, in the perfect spot to help cut down some of the stuff in the influence. So Greg had been working on that. And right now, he's, we've got it to where a lot of our the particles in our influence have been cut back. Was, what did you say about? About 20% of the work there used to be. I would say probably eliminated a bit, 30, 35%. It's a little easier to maintain the filter that we have right now. So we've got our eye watching on that until we well, if, if that works and we can keep everything going and protect the pumps, we'll move in that direction, but try not to spend money.
Can you tell the council or the public what items that you're finding?
Oh.
That are coming through, the influence, the relating to our pumps?
Well, most, most of the problem with the pumps is hair. Okay, so, but you know, the, the screens, we can't get fine enough screens to cut out hair and get enough flow. So.
I, I feel personally.
We did ask, I mean, we did ask the hairdresser in town if she, if she had a, a catch basin for the hair. She does. She has a trap for the hair, so that, that helps a lot. You know, to try to keep some of the hair out, but trying to keep all the hair out is almost impossible. So we're trying to catch everything, and so we're going to keep a good eye on it. That, the filter part kind of moves into the pumps. We're also trying to get a hold of there was a, a pump maintenance man who did work on our pumps when they were down a couple, last winter. And he recommended a couple pumps to us that we may want to look at. We started to look at those, but they're really. Yeah, we're finding that the pump with the motor on it is about 30,000 for each pump. So I'm, we're trying to get all the information on the pumps before we take that biggest step, just to make sure that they can pump. I mean, the head that we have to pump out of our pump station to get to Sutter Creek is very high. And so to try to find a pump that'll grind up, you know, pass enough solids and not clog is really hard. So the pumps that we have in there now are high head water pumps, like everybody knows. But they're, they tend to clog. And the manufacturers kind of switched over the little impellers that are in the pump that help pump the water. They used to be steel impeller. Well, now they make them out of all a high-grade plastic that doesn't break. We're fine, and they don't work as well as the old ones did.
Yeah, the, the filter, the pumps, that when they start getting clogged up with hair and debris, what that does is it slows down the pumping so much, you can't make it up to that 150 feet a ton. And what that does is cost your electricity a lot more and also it breaks down the pumps over time.
So the, and the, so that's where we are on the pumps. We, we did make a recommendation, and I'm, I'm still looking for it. I can't find it. I thought I had it. Was to post flyers or send flyers out.
There are a couple in there.
There is. Okay, you did. Okay, I didn't get the whole packet. So, okay, so you did find some flyers that you put out there.
We kind of, they're sort of self-made ones, but yeah.
Okay.
There, but we, we could use, if you find it, we could put up prettier ones.
That, that does help. We've used them in Sutter Creek, you know, to help add grease, fog, help cut, putting wipes in the, in
Yeah.
The wipes that aren't really flushable.
And the paper towels.
Right. So the next item on the, on the needs is the piping in the plant, that plant was built back in the seventies. And the piping, I mean, what we pumped through those pipes is pretty nasty. And so the inside of the pipes has started to corrode, and we replaced the gate valve, the exit gate valve last year, you found that some of the pipes are so-called corrosion and deposits. Instead of a four-inch pipe, we're bringing water through about a two-inch pipe. And so that's one of the items. When we were doing a capital improvement plan before we raised the rates, that was one of the items on there, is try to replace the pipes that are in the plant. Now Greg and his part-time assistant probably do the work. We'll need to, but we'll, we'll put together a estimate before we make the step of going ahead and changing all those out.
Okay. If I remember right, you said that should the pumps be replaced, then this could be an at the same ti, this would need to be an at the same time?
Yes. So I mean, so that we put new pumps in, we might as well do the piping and just clean everything up and.
Yeah. Yeah.
Our next item on, on just, pretty much just maintenance is our, the roof of the building down there. I don't think it's been changed out for four years. It's coming really close to the end of its life. But our operator is also an ideal handyman, self, self-accompany, but it's good. And he'll, he'll paint in Chemo, and as long as, you know, the city will have to get the materials, and I think he put together a cost estimate to do those, and so that would be up to you to authorize that. Same with the gravel road, the road, the access road going in there, if you've ever driven down there. Start to get some, there has been some pretty good products in it. And to improve the drainage on it would also help a lot. There is, there is an item. I see the item on here is check for an easement. So before we do the work, I think that we're not positive if that easement goes through.
That's, that's.
The property, the adjusted property, and so that we'd have to get permission in order to do.
Not our property, right? It's the one between us and the.
We believe that.
Jack and Maggie's.
The Jack and Maggie.
It does. Yeah.
And so I think we have. And so I think we have access from the road. And then there's the easement and then at the bottom is the city-owned property.
So we'll just make sure that we get it all. Done legally right so that we don't get ourselves in trouble. Um, and the last item is um. I know we had kind of used these dollars when we did our rate increase. And that we're supposed to try to be saving for a capital improvement fund. I know it's hard to do. It always seems to. We get there, oh, good, we got some capital. Oh, no, something went wrong. We have to spend it all, so. Um, but there is that, you see, we just need to keep that in the, in the back of everybody's mind that. The liner we put in there in two thousand and fifteen. Has, has a lifespan, was estimated at about fifteen to twenty years, so. It goes fast. It's already been almost ten years. I can't believe that, but. Um, so that should be, you know, started to be saved for, because if. If it does go down, it's, it's a pretty. Big ordeal to try to get it re-lined down there. We have to pump up the pond, clean everything and. Reroute all the sewer for, you know, the two weeks it takes or three weeks it takes to re-line it, so. And it's expensive to buy the materials and. You know, from there. So that's our, that's kind of our list for right now. Um. Oh, a water service?
Yeah.
Yeah. Our supply line, no. We were gonna go do the road before we. Finished up the road, we dig up the spot where we think it's leaking and something had run over it. And I think it was back when we did the lining of the pond, I think it was. Kind of crossed by that pumper truck where it's been, you know. Crushed by Sweet Pea when we've had to use them to come down. Gets pretty heavy.
Yeah, it's supposed to sand the pipelines.
Okay. Okay. Right, now if I'm. Remembering correctly, um, and looking at, you know, the, without. Going, if you went forward and had bids, we'd know more accurately, but the basic estimation was. About the same for the vertical pumps, you know, you, that was a figure you mentioned before. That would be the bigger ticket item at this point. And then with the others, we would be approaching. You know, what? What do you think the upper limit would be on that?
Um. Probably, I mean, probably going to be without, you know, the lining thing and. Haven't seen Greg's estimate for the roof yet, but.
That, those are gonna be smaller.
Yeah, they're smaller, so.
Just the.
Hope to be under a hundred thousand to hold them together.
Okay.
Wouldn't fix that until, you know,.
Okay, so let's go to questions and then we'll go to public comment and then we'll come back to deliberation. Question, Susan.
Well, we have a sewer committee too.
But, but this issue, do you have questions for Grant?
Uh, no. I'd just like us to explain what we've been doing too.
You're on the agenda later on.
And Bob. Penotti has been very instrumental in trying to figure out how to do these things and how to schedule the financing.
Well.
And, and ideas.
And that's on the agenda in a little bit, so hang on, because it's on, it's on for tonight too. Okay. It's a full night of sewer. Okay. Thanks. Any questions for them? Okay, do you have questions?
Um, I guess, uh, how did you determine that the meter was reading twice the flow?
Uh. We have the, the meter, the water that comes in, the pond elevation raises and lowers, and then we have an exit. The pumps have another meter on it. We kind of compare the, the meter on the pumps is a lot more reliable. And so we can, we just compare those two flows.
Any more questions for?
Um.
I don't think so.
Melanie, do you have questions?
No questions.
Okay, um. I don't have questions on this either. Basic, just, you know, what the ballpark, you know, where, where, with the ballpark. Minimum higher end would be, should we go forward in getting estimates? Okay, so thanks. And I'll open it to the public for any comments or questions to Grant.
Bob Sanoti, and I represent that study committee that Susan alluded to.
Mm-hmm.
Includes Bruce and Susan and myself. This was brought up at the council last August. We've been meeting weekly all the way through the year. We have a more complete list of what Grant threw out there. Unfortunately, a lot more money, but that's beside the point. And we've got some potential solutions or recommendations to the council.
Um, that's on the agenda in a little bit. Your full report.
I don't want to, we're not ready to make a full report yet.
Okay, so you.
I alluded this to you that you had to wait for us to say. We're at the point where we're trying to put a presentation together, but we're still meeting, we're gonna meet with Nico next week to talk about grants. There's also another problem coming up. The state is requiring a spill plan next year. There's potential grants, so we're, we're trying to get everything studied and then come. With a full presentation and ideas of what to do. And again.
So let me just give a word of caution there. Under the Brown Act, I know our training and talk about later. The problem is that you can't meet with Nico.
We are, we're publicly disappointed. It'll be a public meeting. We already anticipated that.
We're real close.
Got the email light you're gonna present.
You know. Yep, but there has been con- I'm concerned that there has been conversation.
Uh, yeah, that's, have there been any conversations with Nico about or prior to? Meeting with him and what you'll discuss.
The only conversation was with me to him, asking him to come.
Okay.
Saying this is basically what we wanted to talk about.
Okay, and the reason why I bring it up is depending on the conversation, there's the potential. That one of the other two council members would then have to step off. So if that would disrupt your county or committee that you're already working on.
Again, the media, the response, understanding that, we're between Nico and them.
Okay. Well, we can have a discussion about that later, again.
Well, we're meeting next Wednesday. Hopefully the present, the notification has to go out Friday.
Right. So why don't we, let's stick around after the meeting and we can just, Bob, discuss what you talked about with Nico. To make sure that we don't violate the Brown Act.
How about if I send you the email?
That you sent to Nico?
Yeah.
There's an agenda for the public hearing too in the, on the back table. So if you're interested in what we're gonna discuss uh next week, it's. But I, I just need to see that email. That's, that's all.
Okay.
So.
Thanks. Okay, and you'll be up again in a minute. Okay.
Again, all we're asking is to be patient with us, let us finish our study, finish our meeting. So we're not ready today to make any presentation.
So, so, so I mean, I understand this. So are you removing your agenda item from the agenda?
I never asked to be on the agenda. The mayor put it on.
Okay.
We've, we've put in.
Okay, but the council members are here for. Uh, full presentation, what, just, just what you're working on.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
Thanks. Okay, so we're back to questions for Grant on the discussion tonight of needed infrastructure. Um, and maintenance with regard to the sewer pond. Is there any other public comment in that regard or questions for Grant? Okay, we'll come back to some deliberation. Um, thank you, Grant. Basically, to us is, is, um, the action to be taken would be to request. Going out for bids that can be presented back to city council for. Um, deliberation and with regard to moving forward on any of these or not moving forward. So we would have accurate financial information. The presentation was, you know, our lead up to that. So at this point, do we? Is there discussion from us or deliberation about the need to pursue? Bids for the needed infrastructure that our engineer and sewer operator have recommended we pursue? Any deliberation on this, Susan? Getting bids?
I'd like to include our work before we go out to bid on anything.
I don't think acquiring bids obligates us to accept them. Hiring the bids would be having information for us for a future city council meeting.
You're getting quotes.
Quotes, thank you. Excuse me, wrong word. Okay, correction, quotes. Quotes, I'm sorry, quotes. We can't make a bid without quotes. Anyway, I apologize for that. So it'd be a matter of getting quotes for. The items that he discussed tonight. Um, influometer perhaps, software, we have a quote on that, we could get more. Filters, uh, pump and the ductal pumping, ductal plumbing for the plant. Those would be the items. Perhaps to get quotes on. Do we have deliberation on the efficacy of getting those quotes?
I would just like to stay in touch, have Bob included in what's done. Instead of having two separate groups doing different things, it would be nice to bring us together and work together.
Well, we, uh, again, I, I don't wanna jump the item, but one of the, one of the things is the, the, the. Is brought up by, again, as Mr. Penotti has mentioned, in the August meeting, the council. Passed the committee to perform certain tasks. The question becomes with that, has that committee gone beyond the scope? Of what the council asked them to do? Because I believe that the council asked that committee to look into alternatives. To our sewer plant issue and what we could do to get out from underneath the thumb of Sutter Creek.
We've done.
So improvement, but, and I appreciate that, but improvements to the infrastructure of the plant. And looking at all the other things may go beyond the scope of the authority given to that committee. And so you may want to, as a, as a council, consider the information coming from our plant engineer. Based upon their current working knowledge of it and what they're doing. Again, it doesn't exclude what you've done, but my, my concern is you may have gone beyond the scope. In, in your work, which is great to a point, but it may create confusion based upon. Limiting scope that that committee was given. Does that make sense, Susan?
Uh, no.
Okay. Well, the, the point of that committee was to determine how to have our own sewer treatment. Without having to use Sutter Creek.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that doesn't include improvements to the current infrastructure. So. That's, that's the reason, and I'm just gonna say, that is the reason why it is an item on tonight's agenda. To have your committee report back to the council so that we can know what you're doing. In connection with what the city has also been doing in working with our engineer to determine the needs of the plant. Because again, we're examining as we prepare for any potential two eighteen. And also any potential issue with how we're going to deal with ARSA and the affluence that's being sent. And what influence that has on our plant as it currently stands. And that's why we've. Encouraged and used work with Grant and Greg to figure out the needs of the current plant based upon their working knowledge of it. Bruce, you may disagree.
Well, it seems like it would be more efficient if we'd all work together.
Well, again, but then you have to refocus the nature of the committee, right? So again, that, tha- then again, that is a decision to be made by the council of a whole. So you can have that vote tonight to combine those two things, but up until that point. The discussion was in August to have you look at what the alternatives to sewer plants could be. Not to look at the function of the sewer plant or the billing and all the other things that we're doing. Again, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, it's just beyond the scope.
Grant, um, none of us, the three of us, ever heard this scope and this focus. We continually, uh, over the months have asked, not asked, we've asked each other. Is there some kind of limitation? I mean, we don't really know what you're talking about. The mayor sent out a, a message saying, you're not standing within the scope and we're all shivering in our heads. Well, we didn't know there was a scope.
Well, then that, that confusion is then the discussion that took place in August with the, what the committee was designed to do. So are you here for that committee organization?
Absolutely.
Okay. It was to look, the committee was voted on by the city, and you go back to record if we need to. The, the committee was there to determine how we get out of pumping our water and our affluence. To Sutter Creek because of the concerns with our site.
I didn't know we were limited.
Well, I didn't say that there was, but, but again, that's what we asked you to do. And so the reason why we put it on the agenda is. We have not had any report. And I think that's, so here's, so here's the, the real easy way to put it. Because we haven't heard from the committee since August. And because you're working on it, the city also has been working to determine what the need is. Based, and I say the city with myself and the mayor, I've been working to determine what the need for repairs are. As we approach a potential rate hike, the two eighteen measure. As well as what infrastructure needs to be improved for, for that. So to your point, yes, we can, we can work together.
Yeah.
Going forward. But we need to, we need a report from you guys, like we're doing now, to understand what you've done.
That's what we're trying to.
Okay.
Return to wrap up to get to that.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, is there a scope of our? Well, that's. We're bringing, bringing a varied amount of point. If we had a scope, we clearly in our communications. Personal communication with the mayor never realized that until recently. We didn't know there was.
I have not had personal communication except with you, Bob, when you've come in and I've said I can't hear about it because of Brown Act. So.
So again, a- again, sorry for any confusion. Um, like, uh, so what we can do tonight is to alleviate that confusion. Is we can re-align what the scope of that committee is based upon your work. Based upon your report tonight, based upon what the city has done. Again, we're not taking any actions tonight, it's informative. But I think too also, the, on the failing, and you can blame me for it. Is we should have pressed harder in each council meeting to get a report from the committee members. Who were on the council to tell us what you were doing so that we could give feedback as a council. To that commi- that committee. Again, I don't give that feedback. That is when we do committee reports each month at the close of our meetings. That's the opportunity for the committees to report on what they're doing so they can get feedback from the council. And know if it aligns or if the council needs to give further discretion. For more things to be done within the scope of that committee. That's a council decision.
Okay, and I wanna get back to this agenda item. Because we, we're gonna revisit this at the end of the, later in the meeting. Um, we have heard, I'm just gonna summarize again to get us back on track. We heard report from our. City engineer with regard to our sewer system and our sewer operator with regard to needed infrastructure. Um, to keep the system going for now. And also to look at a long-term plan. Um, the question to council now in, in, in action is whether or not to have, to. Give them the directive to get quotes for us so there can be. Further discussion regarding what the costs are, what our budget allows and where to go next. So. Given the report from our current plant engineer and our current sewer plant operator. Do we want to go forward in getting quotes? Given the items that they have outlined as needed? And is there a motion to do so?
I, I would suggest that we get together and then do that.
Okay.
Rather than stay separate.
So your deliberation is you'd like to postpone this discussion. Is there any further deliberation on this?
I mean, I think getting quotes is a good idea. At least we have some idea of talking about it cost-wise. You know, I mean, that'll help us, help them, you know, help both committees.
Mm-hmm. They're not committees, they're our employees, our contracted worker.
No.
So. Okay, so. Um.
And actually Bob has been in touch with Grant and Greg.
I would be surprised if not, you know, I am, Bob's thorough. So, but regardless, the motion on the table, the discussion point on the table. Is whether or not we want to. Ask them to get quotes on the needed infrastructure they've brought to our attention.
I make a motion to move forward with getting quotes.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
So there's a motion to move forward on getting quotes. There's a second on that. So we do roll call vote. Susan?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Nico?
Aye.
Nico, Melanie?
Aye.
Sandy? Aye, so that's five. It's, the motion uh is approved to move for a zero-zero. Motion's approved. Would you please? Get quotes regarding the various components you talked about. Would you please get quotes regarding the various components you talked about? Um, to, and as soon as possible, so it can be on the agenda again. Be okay, thank you, thank you very much for your time. Okay. Item six on the agenda, and this is my error, I had a text from Susan Peters that she wasn't gonna be here tonight. And when we approved the consent agenda, I knew, knew that and did not modify and say consent agenda item six is not gonna be talked about tonight, I apologize. That moves us on to consent agenda item, that's number seven, BPAT, and we have people here tonight. Regular agenda, thank you, it's been a long evening. We're gonna probably take a break after this item, no, 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 no. Um, just to kind of make sure we could, we all have the right vocabulary because I've lost mine tonight, so, thank you.
Hi, I am Bradley Booker, representing the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Joyce did not like that. Uh, I am revisiting the continued or updated resolution for the support of the Amador City Sutter Creek Bicycle Pedestrian improvements. Uh, I believe you guys are all familiar with the current resolution and, did I think the resolution in the packet?
It's in, the draft is in the packet?
So the committee, which serves the county, has, uh, done a lot of work to kind of do the legwork to find out how much all of this stuff would cost, basically Amador City has announced this, none of this is in city limits for, for your departments, it doesn't really matter, but what matters is that the support for the two cities is together so that together the project can, uh, position ACTC for their funding and assistance in the matter. So, uh, if there are any questions about the resolution or the items for discussion, I'm happy to offer myself.
So in connection with the, the cooperation of Sutter Creek, has Sutter Creek yet voted on this resolution?
No, we will, we'll continue, we're both, we're working with both cities to get items on the agenda and support. They have a initial resolution like you guys, but they have not signed the, they haven't done the review resolution with the financials. You got the first to act on.
Then the other question I have, it's based upon the estimates in the packet, is there a division of allotment for those funds based upon size of scope for the project, like you mentioned, not much in Amador City versus?
Uh, it like city, uh, where the project piece falls within the city limits really is the, the deal. So I think Susan, there's one sign heading out this way, two signs headed out of town before the end of.
And maybe a bike, uh. What's it called?
Oh, yes, they, they talk about essential also, which Amador Trail Stewardship, uh, do the labor for that. So the materials for the essential thing, uh, would be the lower than what's quoted here, but.
Okay, yeah, the costs for Amador City is, are really low.
Yeah.
I included, and I created these maps if you want to.
Great, thank you. And most of, uh, most of these items can be done by someone in public works, or like I said, Amador Trail Stewardship or as we get out of Sealand, it's the county, uh, is really covering most of the cost. But this is here to show if we had to pay out of pocket, we, like me, that's what it would cost, not, not the city.
So my last question, I promise, for this issue, uh, if one city doesn't want to join and cooperate, what happens to the project at that point?
It may limit the county or ACTC's willingness to provide funding for the overall project. So it could limit the completion of some of the connection portions like Amador Road or Turner Road.
Okay, so.
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
Susan's a member of BPAT.
One idea is if Sutter Creek doesn't want to join, is for us. This is Amador City, and this is the route down Turner Road to Sutter Creek.
Mm-hmm.
And if Sutter Creek doesn't want to participate, we possibly could just have a loop of going this way and then coming back on String Bean Alley, just having a loop around town. As a possibility.
And that would be the audible, if both cities didn't want to play, then we could find ways to still complete a project that the county or ACTC would, uh, provide funding to.
But at this point, we're, you're, you're asking us to support as a joint, okay?
And that would, honestly, that would move forward the, uh, supported, uh, items within the city at your own pace anyhow, uh, if you did want to add any of those items or when ACTC provided the funding, uh, for the project.
There's, there's no commitment.
Yeah, well, I noticed there's, there's no financial commitment within the revised, this draft resolution. And so you're, it's basically asking for continued support for the project. And this is, you need this to go forward to, for your next step, which is what?
Uh, with the support of Sutter Creek, city council will take the items to ACTC. We'll find out what portion they would like to fund and.
Um, and is considering the resolution at this point and is not, um, committing to, for example, um, two signs or to the type of stencil, all of that would be coming after the.
Right.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to questions from council.
I already asked.
Yes, this is, this is to get us in line for funds with ACTC, really, the, the step that it takes.
I see in here, it mentions phase one, is, is there a phase two, phase three?
Uh, we can continue, yes, improving any and all access routes and it definitely has the support of the committee to uh, offer suggestions, there's actually an open call for projects with ACTC. So if you have ideas that are not mentioned here, uh, the committee would love to assist you in, uh, perhaps realizing those.
Okay.
And phase two might be the String Bean Alley.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I was thinking, I remember that one, it first got presented.
So. And Sutter Creek had phase two items too, but we're, we're not sure what they're doing.
Okay.
We'll just take one step at a time.
Bruce, you have any questions, Bradley?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Melanie? Okay, we're gonna open up to see a public comment if anyone has questions for you. So to the public, are any questions for Bradley or Bill? I know. Okay, any deliberation on this, we've kind of moved the deliberation a bit anyway, but it, we're hearing, you know, at this point, that this is strictly continuing the support of the two cities towards the completion of this project, so you can go to the next phase of going to ACTC for hardware funding or, or installation funding of that nature, right? Okay, so, given that, is there any deliberation on going forward with the resolution at this point?
I move, we approve this.
Hang on to that, we'll see if there's any other question first, okay? All right, Susan, so you move we go forward with the resolution, is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, and again, at this point with the resolution, it's support only. Um, we would, you know, finalize the draft and put the proper dates in, there's no financial commitment. Okay, so with that, we can do roll call vote, Susan? Bruce?
Aye.
You go, Melanie?
Aye.
Okay, we move forward on this, and motion is approved, five, zero, zero. So, thank you, um. We, uh, I think we can finish the next item and then pause for a break. So item eight on the agenda, request for reimbursement, presentation and possible action by motion and council vote regarding reimbursement of improvements made to Old City Hall by tenants, and it's Kat Leon and Corinne Moore.
Um, I really don't have anything more to add other than what I've already put in the letter requesting that the council will open and consult with us based on the circumstances of what's happened.
Okay, thank you, Kat. So do, before you step down, anybody have questions for Kat, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you don't sound well. Okay, we'll try to make this very, do you have questions for Kat, Susan?
No.
Bruce?
No.
Nico? Melanie?
No.
Okay, no. Okay, is there any public comment on the request for reimbursement of the, um, lighting and fan fixtures that Wine Tree Farms and Sutter Hill Designs put into the Old City Hall? The amount, any questions to them on that, the amount is five hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. No questions from the general public, okay, that'll be closed. I'm sorry, Ray, um, it, the, the request is for reimbursement of lighting and some lighting fixtures within Old City Hall that, um, Kat and Corinne put in for their business and they're gonna be moving. Um, so they would like to be reimbursed for those fixtures. Okay, so that would, Dave, do you have a question?
I'll make the recommendation to, to the city council, I think you have three options here. One, you can pay the requested amount, uh, which they're requesting here by letter, which they have included the receipts for, uh, of what they put in. Uh, the second option is when it comes to like tenants that lease a property, under the current lease that we had, um, you can make changes to the building if those are approved in writing. Uh, and what the, what can happen there is either the tenant can take those fixtures with them prior to leaving, as long as they reinstall, uh, similar writing or lighting that was there before. Or the other recommendation is, um, of course, this in the sense that, given all that's happened uh, through the past, the other thing the council can look at is when Kat, Kat, correct me if I'm wrong, your husband installed the track lighting and the fan for you, correct?
He installed.
Right, so what had happened is Kat contacted Joyce and then Joyce contacted me. And so based upon the electrical need, we, through Larry White, we hired an electrician to come out and to put lighting in and to work with Kat and Corinne. Uh, when the electrician got there, the work had already been done. And so the electrician didn't complete the work and Larry couldn't, couldn't speak to that. So the other suggestion is this, based upon the lighting that they installed, we can go with the, the amount that they spent here, or you can use some sort of equation on what it would have cost us to have the electrician install that same light, right? Which probably would have been a lot more.
We were, the lights were in, most of them were already in when the electrician came out, just because that one box was hot. We, nobody ever said that he might put anything in for it.
Well, he was supposed to, and that's what we had read, that's what Joyce was supposed to tell you. And so that's what, that's what, that any electrical work was supposed to be done by an electrical contractor, that's what is required by our insurance on any of our buildings. So, but the point is, we can, the point is, is we can assess if the council will last, what work was done and the cost, if the council still wants those lights to remain, a reimbursement based upon this amount or a speculation of what it would have cost to have an electrician put in those same lights and then figure that into its equation here on what decision it makes to, to not to reimburse Kat and Corinne of that amount. So those are kind of, does those three options make sense to everybody? So again, I hope those are the most equitable, given the council then to make that decision with the request that's been made.
Any questions for Dave?
Did we get anything in writing?
Uh, that's a sticky issue.
It's in the lease.
I mean, for improvements, because the request was that we have to have writings.
They were not made, so they were requested, but they were not made.
Okay.
And I think your comment, you offered to, to just take the new fixtures with you when you moved.
Well, they're, they're not being worked with there either, but, um, they, we can put back up what was up there, that's, I, I have those, they're in the attic, we can put them back, that's.
So, so to that point, and to Kat's, what Kat is saying, correct my wrong, Kat? If the city would like those same light fixtures in, then the city can pay that amount and not have them replace the old lights, is that amenable, Kat?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to take a look at the lights.
The lights and the fans are, all the lighting is in the pictures that I, that I received.
Oh, I didn't see pictures, Kat, I'm sorry.
Just these little, just, they're very small.
Oh. Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's pretty long, but you're welcome.
Yeah.
Mentioned that pretty, lots of centers in there were, like, there isn't that so much.
They were like that.
Yeah. Those are the pictures. Yeah.
They're a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
I'll come by your shop.
Yeah. Um. So. Any other, okay, that's comment from Susan, Bruce, any comments on it?
No. Ed?
Mm-hmm.
I mean.
Deliberation.
Do we want the lights, I mean, is that what you?
It basically, that's what Dave is saying, we have three choices, we can reimburse and keep the lights or we can request that the, the original lights be put back in or we can do a complicated formula of, you know, math.
No, that's not your complicated.
So.
The original lights were done on, basically on zip, not. I mean, they were like, they were all going into one spot, they weren't even wired.
Were they like these lights?
They were like these, but they were all wired across the ceiling and into one box. It was not, they were not properly done and installed from the get-go, I don't know who put those in, but that's why we thought that especially with Dave, because my husband was checking one of the things and got a little electrical shock up there because things were left turned on. And I think, I'm guessing what happened is when they put in the EV chargers, they restarted up all the panels, not realizing that one of them should not have been turned back on because it was hot. I'm guessing that's what happened. But.
Okay. So Nico, any deliberation on that?
Um. I think, uh, I mean, my personal opinion is that we should wait until the premises is vacated before we, um, make a decision.
Well, we have to remove them beforehand. I mean, we want, we, we have to be out by the thirty-first, if we, if we're gonna change them, we're gonna change them next week. It needs to be done, I mean.
The lease language is very tenant favorable compared to most instances I've seen. Give them the right, I mean, the, the choice of the tenants. They can, uh, take out what they put in and replace what was there in the same condition that it was. And the city has no choice but to object. The question is, they've done some upgrading, the property does, further lease belongs to the tenants. And, um, I mean, a lot of leases are written the opposite way, which is whatever you put in, uh, is ours and it is ours. This says the opposite. And so clearly the, the choice is really the tenant's future is whether or not, hey, we did these, these are better, they're more energy efficient, you, you want to reimburse them, but I also note, I don't see any charge for labor in this, it was just the, the building exists from the materials. So, uh, it's the tenant's call, they can do that, what they want. If Susan wants to go down and look at it there, I'm presuming, I know that modern lighting when you buy it is a lot more efficient, energy efficient, for whatever that's worth. Uh, but, uh, clearly the tenant has the right to do whatever they want, the issue is whether they'll say, but they're saying, we're willing to leave them there if you reimburse for our out-of-pocket cost to buy. And so that's a decision for the city.
Also, this, the city should consider that with the city moving into that space, the city may want a ceiling fan as they did. And so again, it may be advantageous to take the ceiling fan that's already there, that's already been installed.
Buy a new one and aim for that.
Yeah. So just, it's something to consider.
I mean, I've been in many times, it's much better lighting than, than fluorescent.
And fluorescent?
And if I'm gonna be spending any time there, you know. Um, and the ceiling fan, we all know the benefits of that. And, uh, I mean, I would, I would have no problem.
Okay.
Like we said, the, the paint as well is, it, it's a much more welcoming space than it was be- before. And I think when we're just talking about that, we're just paying for the lighting and the fans over.
Are you making a motion?
I'm just discussing at this point.
Deliberation, yeah, so.
I'm tired of making motions.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
At the end of the discussion?
I think so, deliberation, yeah.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we, that we reimburse.
That, say that again, please.
I make the motion that we reimburse.
I'll second it.
For five hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
Correct.
Okay?
And, and Bruce seconded it?
Bruce seconded it, so we'll go by roll call, Susan. Bruce. Nico. Melanie. Okay, motion is approved.
Are you by four oh one?
Okay.
The old lights, whether you want them back or not?
No.
Oh, of the firehouse?
Okay, okay, thank you Kat and Corinne, okay, and we will very much enjoy, despite my no, but will very much enjoy the new light. We are going to thank you all for being here, but we are going to take a pause because we've been here for two hours and ten minutes. No, we're not done. We got a few more quick ones, but it's time to refresh Wiggle and take a break. We're going to take, uh, we'll come back at eight twenty. So for those of you who want to remain, I welcome you, and I have snacks for city council people and those who remain, I'm going to wait for it to clear out first.
We're back on.
Okay, we're back on, cameras aiming at us? Okay, then we will continue our meeting, we are going to be starting with, um, item nine. Uh, which doesn't have any attachments to it. Alternatives to Old City Hall, information only, report regarding the task to evaluate. Community proposed locations for City Hall, Dave Gross, Bruce Shaw.
So I'll make this quick, Pat told me I had twenty-five words, I've already used twelve. We just want to report the council, so again, I won't review the five criteria. That the mayor gave to our committee to look at alternatives to City Hall. So just quickly, the alternatives that were presented were the firehouse in Southern Creek. Which unfortunately, there's actually a sixth criteria that wasn't mentioned. The Brown Act actually requires that all city businesses be conducted within the confines of the city. So that negated that one, but we did, because the public robust it, look into it. And I, 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 again, I think a lot of people are aware of this, staff spends about thirty hours per week. In this chamber, working, and the Mer- Donovan, Dominic Moreno could not provide thirty hours. For staff to be in his building, as well as, these records are to remain within the control of the city and its employees. He could not provide adequate lock space for that. So it was a no-go to begin with, uh, based on those criteria. Also, the other alternative was to remove the fire truck, place it in some place, and then use that space. So, uh, Larry White was very good to come out and meet with Bruce and I and demonstrate, even before you get into the building. The ADA access that is required would not allow for it, so the slope of the ramp was at fifteen percent. ADA requires eight percent or less, and what that would require is then a ramp which would actually take for ADA, ADA access. Into Highway forty-nine, or Old Forty-Nine. And that would include like the ramp to have access through the door, which would then require that we. Lock off the big door and build an ulterior door, that gets you into the building. Once you're in the building, the building does not qualify as a habitable space, which would require a lot of money and rehab to make that a possibility. Also, we looked at various other spots that were offered, such as, um, Roger and Connie's place, again. ADA access wouldn't allow for it, again, based on the slope. And the required ramp to get into that structure wouldn't work besides the size, as well as Roger and Connie. Again, did not have an understanding of the requirements for time needed by the staff. We also did have a request or an offer from, uh, the O'Neills. And again, their space did not meet the requirements based on ADA parking access, which Bruce can speak to this one if he wants to. Uh, based on the lack of parking, it would have required people to. Have access through that building to his personal property, which would then give him a personal liability. Is there anything else that you would add to that, Larry?
Just that we also looked into arguing with the insurance company to provide a temporary office space. Uh, but we had no place to put that temporary office space. Yeah, it, it, by the time we got a trailer that was large enough to meet the needs, we didn't have anywhere to put it. That would not impact the rehabilitation of the City Hall, plus, the currently. The insurance company was not, they had not made arrangements to reimburse us the money. It was, the quote was sixty-two thousand dollars, so that kind of negated that.
And, and anyone of us here at six o'clock this evening that tried to get in with the construction. You can only imagine that amplified by the fact that now the entire building is wallowed by fence, employees, and employee, like, construction worker parking, so.
We looked at over there, we looked at putting on the new basketball court, we looked at temporarily over where the, where the dirt was. Good accessibility and feasibility, and plus we weren't guaranteed we'd be reimbursed upon this.
No, and then, within the confines of even that ten-day window in that structure. Council member Cheryl did receive an email, which was an informal notice. That the current tenants, after all that, had found a different location and were moving out. So, that was kind of fun there.
Yeah, but we still followed through with our commitment that we were directed to do. We kept on the feral, but we're like, no, get in the trucks, we're going to Southern Creek.
They insisted on going everywhere.
Well, I want to thank you all for following through on that task. Um, you know, as you all remember, that task arose out of the, the Bruhaha, the last meeting, and the noise that was there, um. And I thank you for following through on it, so, so thoroughly, um.
We do work for the Bruhaha.
I know, we do, and I like, uh, there are a couple of words I'm now very fond of, one is Bruhaha, and the other is Ballyhoo. I know, isn't that good? I like both of those. So, thank you, on to, uh, agenda item number ten, for this one we do have an attachment. This is weed abatement, discussion of possible action by motion and council vote regarding bid proposal for herbicide treatment. Dave, I turn it to you.
So Joyce had been very good in the past to handle this, given my responsibilities now fall on my shoulders. Uh, Foot Hill Pest Control has contacted us, I did ask Joyce to seek also another bid from another contractor that had contacted us. That contractor has never gotten back to us, uh, again, just based on the amount. Uh, I have a certain amount of leverage to authorize certain things within the city. I feel that this one, while it may fall within that guideline, I, I don't feel comfortable making that decision, so I thought it was appropriate for the council. To review this and decide, I will say, we have budgeted in the annual budget for this amount, so that allot, that allotment is already there. It's now up to the council to decide if they want to go with this bid based upon the fact that we saw another, just of a local company. Or if they don't like this amount, then they can seek, try and seek an outside source, but I leave that decision up to the council.
Is this the company that did it last year?
Yes.
Is, I think he missed a lot of places myself.
Well, I'll tell you, uh, based on the bid, I do have, personally, I do have some concerns with the wording. I mean, I understand where Oak Knoll Cemetery is, but the treatment of select cities, I'm not sure what that entails. And so again, that's another reason why I brought it to the council, so that you guys could ask that question, and maybe Joyce has that answer, I currently know.
As far as the streets concerned, it would be, the way that it's been done in the past is, um. Up School Street, and then around, you know, the dug, dug, like that, and down. And, uh, just spraying on, if you're going up School Street, or they would only be spraying on the right side where the. The empty, the field is, we don't spray in front of anybody's home because you don't want to kill their plants. And then as you turn left to go around the city, it would be on the left. Um, they hit that.
Yeah.
And, and then.
Hardly done. It was, last year it was hardly done.
I, I realize that, and I agree, the guy, he'd never done it before, and I felt, as I was driving around with him, because he. Because, yeah, I get it, uh, yeah, I got it, I got it, yeah, I got it, that, um, maybe he didn't get it, but, you know. Into, uh, until the, the house is starting, and he stopped there. And then, um, sometimes we would do the fence line in the south parking lot. You know, where the fences and then a toast property, just along the fence there. And where the sign is, where the, where Highway forty-nine comes here, and the parking lot comes here, it makes. There's a, it comes like that, and, and our, there's a sign there, we do around that sign just to keep the grass. Down, so the sign stands out, and then, um. Out Amador Creek Road to the end, and, and only certain places, and some people have do not spray signs. So you avoid those places, there isn't much really to do on Amador Creek, just a few very, few spots. And then the Oak Knoll Cemetery. I drove out to the Oak Knoll Cemetery the other day because I hadn't been there for quite a while. Where the, um, where the graves are. There's nothing going to grow in that area for years to come, I don't believe, however, the cemetery does. So that's basically the knoll, but the cemetery, uh, property line does slope down. And where it slopes down, and there's a fence that, uh, is around the perimeter of the cemetery. And there's, uh, tall grass there that probably would benefit from being sprayed. And there's tall grass there that probably would benefit from being sprayed. Um, but where the graves are, that, I think that's been sprayed so much over the years that it's, it will be hundreds of years before anything could grow there. But there is, but there's still a lot of places where there are no graves in the, in the outer reaches of the cemetery that has a lot of grass.
What are, what are the areas you're thinking were missed, Susan?
Uh, up and down. Is it Fremont Line?
Mm-hmm.
Up to Bunker Hill. It hardly was affected. And then Amador Creek Road, just different spots where they should have been. It seems like we should say that we might review what he does and.
Well, we can give more, that's the thing. You can, as a council, you can say, wow, like this information, make that a more expansive list in, in order to fulfill that commitment of sixteen hundred dollars. Because, like I said, this is not descriptive enough.
Could we provide a map that has exactly like the highlighted spots?
Yeah. Well, that, well, that was the other part, too. This came to us, and then they had, so Joyce was very good to get this to me. Thank you, Joyce. But then the forecasted rain has been, so it's ideal to have him come and spray about end of, mid-April, end of April, when we, just, just as we get out of the rainy season.
Yeah.
Otherwise, if we'd done it when they first requested it, which was back in February, it would have just washed away.
Yeah, I think it did rain, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Ideally, it should be done in January, because part of this, what they use is a pre-emergent. It's a little late for pre-emergent. It's all going to get emerged.
And then January is rainy, yeah.
Oh, it's just a difficult thing.
And we could, we could have that discussion all day, because changing weather patterns, you know, when you're ready.
Mm-hmm. This, well, the.
It's hard.
Yeah, but the bid does not say pre-emergent.
So, and, and to, also to the point of the map, it, it should be known, the council doesn't already know, it should be known that on, on Bunker Hill Road that goes around, anything on that side is.
County.
Yep. So, but I think we should spray a lot on this side, on that side of the hill.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Your friend, Susan.
It'd be good to hit the city parking lot, too, because mm. Yeah, it's like a lot of.
Yes, it is.
There, so.
Which is part of that, too. So some of that also is, well, Dominic and his crew have promised, to use that loosely.
They've done some.
Uh, they wanted that whole triangle area out of the, that, the creek bed that goes up towards like where the speed limit sign is, up to where the city entrance sign is. They've, they've committed to, to clean all that up, including taking some of.
Lock trees down.
Yeah. Yeah, they've committed to it. Again, I don't know what their schedule is. So they've done some, but there's a lot more that needs to be done.
Okay.
It'd be good to get all the blackberry bushes off forty-nine.
I agree, I hate those things.
Cut that. And Dominic said he would do it years ago.
Well, and that's, and I, I hadn't, again, this is maybe a little off-subject, so I apologize, but when it comes to blackberries, I don't know if anybody else has this experience. I had cut some down and then had a quick burn pile. I was amazed at how fast and how hot they incinerate. So especially as we have a fire risk of any kind, blackberries are not our friends, you know, so.
Or the pine trees.
Right. But even more so the blackberries, because they lie in, you know, they're, they're on the ground. So again, something that we should be considering.
Well, um, well, I think we should, we should specify which city streets are priority streets on this, so we know for sure that they're being done, or the, in priority areas. Um, select streets is a little vague.
So I guess the question here is, does the council want to authorize me to seek that and give me the authority to act if it's adequate with what's described? Or does the council want me to get that information and come back next month?
Council?
Personally, I think it should be sprayed as soon as possible. Because everything's going to sea. Once it goes to sea, then here comes next year.
Yeah, I will act on this immediately if the council does it.
Also, I would like them to avoid no spray signs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got a couple around town, and I know up the creek there's a number. Otherwise, I'm in favor.
Yeah, I'm, I'll make a motion for Dave to have authority.
A second. Okay, so there's a motion to give Dave the authority to, um, work with this with Foot Hill Sierra Pest Control regarding, uh, clearly delineating the streets and areas that we would like sprayed. Um, and to, within this quote of sixteen hundred dollars. And it's been seconded. On you men, okay. Bruce?
Oh, hi. Yeah.
Yes. Nico?
Hi.
Melanie?
Hi.
Okay, motion is approved. It's five zero zero to give Dave the authority to pursue.
I'll look for.
Okay. And in item eleven, pedestrian death between amateur Whitney Museum Building and Tavern Building. Discussion and possible action regarding pro, uh, project bid to repair a portion of the wooden plank deck. Bruce Sherrill.
Well, Kevin came and looked at. Does everybody know where the pocket park is?
Yeah.
Between the museum.
And it's not the main boardwalk?
No.
No. It's, it's in the very back where the stairs go up, going up the alleyway.
Good.
It's about, um, maybe four feet by the width of the, of the park. It's probably twenty, twenty or twenty-five feet, maybe. And what he's recommending is you take that out and basically pour concrete, because it's just too close to the ground. He said it's just gonna, if we replace the wood, it's gonna rot out again. Concrete will be more permanent.
That's a good question. Yes.
Is this your recommended concrete guy?
No.
This guy lives in town.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Um.
Somebody here recommendable.
Do you have a, do you have a thought on that?
What? I'll get to the council, and then I'll, okay, do it in my.
Very, very specific concrete thoughts, I know.
More than, not, not necessarily specifically this particular item, or this particular concrete.
Okay.
We've been working with, uh, who's the people that are funding the stuff we're getting, raising out, part of the LEAP's grant, the LEAP's grant, to where we've been allocated some funds. And I'm in the process of researching a certified access specialist to come and evaluate all of the city facility, if I'm yelling, I apologize, my words are fucked up. To evaluate all of the city's facilities, not only the structures, but also all of the sidewalks, and all of the paths of travel and everything that we have within the city. And so what they will do is they will identify deficiencies. And then once we have a list of deficiencies, we will then go into what we call a transition plan. And that transition plan will identify which are the worst areas for public access. And then it'll be coming to the council for direction for the city engineer to prepare plans and specifications to have check off the list of what's the priority. So that's my only comment or concern is, is you take funds now to go into a portion that may or may not be a priority, and so that's my only comment.
So include this project with what he's going to recommend?
If it's part of the city's path of travel, or potentially in traffic, it'll be part that is being evaluated, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Will it be on the top of the list or the bottom of the list? I can't tell you that at this time.
Mm-hmm.
But that's just what I'm coming from the city engineers representing the city that at some point in time, we're going to have to spend some money. And that money needs to be spent checking off that priority list. So I really want to spend funds at this time for something that's not at the top of the list.
So this, this would be included in the LEAP grant. Or this would be?
LEAP grants only for planning. The LEAP grant would do the plan, would, we would have funding for planning and funding for an ADA specialist as part of the plan. And then we would, the city money would have to be used to address the priorities identified with the LEAP grant process.
Correct. The LEAP grant identifies your, where you're doing good.
And where you're not.
And where you're not doing good.
Mm-hmm.
And then the consultant then takes and prioritizes the items that need to be addressed.
Mm-hmm.
And then you, as the council, with those recommendations, pivot. And then what we start doing is, is the city then allocates funds to check off the list. You don't have to do all of those items. That's why it's called the transition plan. You say, this year we're going to do item one, two, and three, and this is where we're getting the funding to do. And we're going to next year do four, five, and six, but that, there, but if it's part of the city's path of travel to city amenities, and I'm guessing that's the thing that'll take you up to Clover Park.
Yep.
From Main Street, so it would be part of the, the access. It would be part of the path of travel.
Okay. Can I, I'm going to go back to Bruce for a minute. Define the problem that required having somebody come out and look. What's the problem out there? Why do we, what's the problem?
Big holes in the, in the wood. Somebody's going to fall through.
So question to that, at this point, are there cones or any tape that restricts access? Okay, so, well, that's my job tomorrow. To begin with, uh, is it, is it actual holes in the, in the planking right now?
No.
Okay. So I'm sorry, I misunderstood where it was, so I apologize for that. I thought it was the main thoroughfare in front of the museum, so I apologize for that. So I didn't walk up the park apart. So I will make sure that we have barriers.
Okay, I guess the next question is, um, um, is there concrete under any other portion of that deck?
Well, I mean, there's footings.
Yeah.
Supporting the wood.
So we're just going in and just pouring a concrete slab?
And then putting wood on top of it.
No.
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 So it's just replacing part of the deck with concrete?
Okay.
Bruce, to the, so, so my question, not as city manager, administrator, is as a citizen, that old decking is kind of cool. Is, is there a feasibility of a similar return to the decking with, like, if they put, um, a different kind of structure underneath other than wood, like concrete barrier, could that, could that be restored to what it is, or is, is concrete the only option?
Well, according to Kevin, concrete would be the only solution. Because it's so, he said it's so close to the dirt. I mean, it's like.
But could we dig out the dirt?
Right.
It's just.
Are, are you open to having another contractor look at it, they could have restored?
Yeah. Let's just, the city engineer look at it and come back with their recommendation.
Okay.
Good. Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So.
No action.
No, no action.
But at least it came to our attention. So we can protect ourselves.
Okay. Okay, the, um, last regular, well, no, it's not. The next regular agenda item. I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself. So proposed donation, discussion and possible action by motion and council vote regarding a donation of funds for office equipment or office furniture for the Old City Hall. And there's a handout in, I mean, there was an attachment in there that sort of outlined things. Um, I was contacted by a representative of a group of individuals who would like to make a donation of up to five thousand dollars to the city for needed office furniture or equipment in the move to the Old City Hall. Does come with some conditions to it. Um, the donors would like to remain anonymous. Um, the city provide a twenty-five percent matching fund. Donation's only used for needed furniture and equipment for the Old City Hall. So it's not an open-ended donation, being encumbered line item. And so this is a, um, possible action item. It's certainly a discussion about whether or not to accept this with these conditions. And, um, I leave it open to questions.
I mean, at the end of our stay there, can we bring it here?
That. We don't have to sell it in a yard sale, no.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
We don't have to walk.
We don't have to put it up for sale in a yard sale.
Right, so after we use the equipment there, we can continue to use.
Use the equipment.
Here.
Well, how do we, how do we use more desks and chairs?
Well, we get. That's, we don't need to birdwalk that far, Susan. We can just birdwalk into like, we're moving, we need to have furniture there. Do you want to accept the donation to purchase some?
Instead of moving these ridiculously heavy.
We're not going to move them.
Exactly.
They will not fit.
Yeah.
Yeah, like these.
We're going to move, we'd be.
The desk that he's got over there.
Yeah, that might be the only thing in our life.
Pretty convenient. Yeah.
We could possibly.
Anything.
The issue back where you sit, Susan, is you've got an, an anonymous donor who will give you five thousand dollars if you'll give matching funds.
Yeah. So it's really nice.
Twelve fifty.
Yeah, are you willing to spend some money?
Which we would easily, probably have to spend anyway.
Right.
Yes.
Yep. And I think, yeah, anyway, any other questions that I might not be able to answer, because it was not a lengthy conversation?
I make a motion to accept the donation.
Take the money and run?
Yep.
Second.
Okay, so any other discussion amendment to this?
Accepting the money and moving some of our existing furniture.
No, it's, it's.
That, that won't be the matching, sorry, Susan.
No. No.
I mean, there's just, we could get folding chairs, or, you know, then, yeah.
It's, uh, you know, it's open to what is needed.
Yeah.
Up to that amount. So there's a motion and a second, so do roll call. Motion and a second to accept the donation with the conditions, um, outlined. Okay, we'll do roll call vote, Susan.
Melanie and Nico?
Yes.
I don't know, it just seems like a waste.
Well, you can say no. Say you don't want to accept the money.
Oh, I'd love the money.
It's conditional. Do you accept it under those?
You don't want to be done to the furniture.
Well, equipment is pretty broad. I think you could, it could be called, equipment could be qualified in a lot of different things.
Well, it's furniture. It's furniture and equipment.
Yeah.
Right, right, yeah.
And.
Equipment.
That those are the categories, so, yep.
Handoff needed printer.
Here's the deal, Susan, I promise, I won't try to buy a helicopter.
It'll still, it'll still pass if I say no.
True.
Right.
I'll say no.
Okay. No. Bruce?
Hi.
Nico?
Hi.
Melanie?
Hi.
Okay, I, standing. So it passes four, one, zero. Uh, or it's approved four, one, zero. I will get in touch with their spokesperson. And then the last item on the regular agenda is fourteen. I go back to Dave. Update. Brown Act Training Information Only.
So.
No handout for that.
What we're looking at is the second week in April.
April tenth.
On a Thursday.
April tenth.
What, what does everybody's schedule look like? Because again, it's, I, I have to say that it's mandatory by law.
Um.
So that's why I want to check with you guys, see.
Taxes are due.
That's, that's several days after my knee replacement, so I'm not going to.
For you, I'd be urged with that.
Is it, excuse me, is this for the Brown Act training, is that what we want?
So it, it should, it is an in-person requirement unless there's an extenuating circumstance.
And.
We're probably, we're probably an hour, an hour, hour and a half at the most.
So what's the date?
We don't know yet. It's April tenth at this point, if that works with everybody's schedule.
It's Thursday.
Any time in particular?
We can figure that out. I figured we'd do it about the same time as a council meeting. We can do it a little bit earlier, so six to seven, or seven to eight. Again, I don't want to take you away from families. I don't want to cause you to have any that conflicting schedules, but again, and I'll just tell you, in the future, this training will be done like the third week of January.
Right.
We didn't do it because of changes to the council, and no one. And knowing that they were coming, and so we wanted to make sure that every council had a chance to do it. Although I, I'm getting a good sense that Melanie already has a pretty good working of the Brown Act, so.
But yeah, April tenth is fine.
Okay, Bruce?
Yeah.
Nico?
I think so.
Okay, was the six o'clock or seven o'clock?
Six.
Six.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll bring pizza.
Can we have pizza during the training?
Yes.
Daylight.
Okay. I'll bring pizza.
Not in the dark. So six a.m.
Right, I know. Does the Brown Act prohibit drinking during meetings?
Yes. Yeah, here's my thing with that. If you're gonna do it, don't tell me.
I think Robert Shesaw order does, but anyway. Okay, our last thing is. Oh, we, we didn't do the sewer, I skipped it.
Oh, here's what I'm, given the discussion that we already had, here's what I'll put before the council when it comes to that item. So, the city has its scope. The committee was given its scope. Clearly, there was some confusion there. I think part of that is. Is that there was no reporting on the part of the committee to the council. Each month, because either it wasn't brought to us or something. If there'd been reporting along the way. I think it would help with that. That is in the past. So at this point, I think what you need to decide as a council. Is do you want to broaden the scope to include responsibilities the city already has? When it comes to sewer, or do you want to just leave the committee with the advisement that they continue to work on? Alternatives to Sutter Creek Sewer Plant and ARSA. And not have them do the work that's already being done by myself and the mayor. Correspondent of potential two eighteen, infrastructure repairs and ARSA issues. So. That's what's before the committee or the council.
One, one segue there, because Nico, I mean, they have. Tentatively worked up a public meeting notice, which. We, everybody's got a hand on this now. Nico, I don't know if you want to talk about this?
Uh, yeah, sure. I mean, um, I think the goal is to just have a more open candid conversation around the topic without. As many formalities and then there are, there's an agenda here around funding. I'd done some research on funding and Bob reached out and basically asked for help um, on some knowledge on funding and. Um, I gave him some information that I had collected. I have that, the, the account with the California Water Board. To uh, provide the project plan, funding, uh, I think we discussed that previously and um. And so I think this will just give us the opportunity to talk about available uh, funding mechanisms um, collectively and then. Get some feedback from the community about funding and um, I think there's also uh. Someone I met that used to do water bonds, um, so we can, not, not water bonds, but just bonds in general for um. For city government, so that also might be another individual that we invite to that meeting and just advise on um, different. Funding mechanisms uh, for capital improvement projects. So yeah, uh, the goal is to just uh, get some public involvement um, on the committee.
So let me just point out the problem that exists here. So I have the email from Bob. And Bob here says he's looking at, if you'd like me to read it, I can summarize it. Essentially. Nineteen seventy-five, there were different laws that came to spills. He is concerned about infrastructure and spills and having a spill plan. And the possibility of grants to infrastructure, so it's confusing on whether it's to infrastructure or spill infrastructure.
Yeah.
That Nico?
I honestly don't know. I think this is the agenda that he asked me to put together, so um.
So, cause that's, here's the problem, although you may not wanna agree with me, this very much sorts with. If the committee has gone beyond its scope and is looking at solutions to infrastructure beyond simply. What we do to get rid of our actual and are looking at repairs to that. Then the problem is, is Bob may have reached out. To another council member that can be a deciding factor on that. And that's a Brown Act violation, like ten ways to, to Sunday. From what I'm seeing here. So the, the problem that creates is in order for you to go forward, even with that public meeting, Nico. Another one of these council members has to then step away, so there can only be two.
Unless it's a public meeting.
No.
No, because the conversations are taking place that is the potential Brown Act violation. So if you move forward it, you just perpetuate the Brown Act violation.
The public meeting can still happen, Susan, but the sewer committee, one of you two needs to step away from it. So Nico can step in.
Even at a public meeting?
Because you're planning a public meeting, the three of you cannot plan a public meeting.
Planning a public.
Yeah. So.
That's easy.
No, one of you needs to step off. Oh, you're gonna step off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't fight over it. Don't fight over it. And Nico's like, oh man.
Well, Nico can, he can err on the side and say Dave didn't give me the training yet, so I'll take, I can take some of that.
Oh, I'll blame him.
Yeah, blame it. It works, but you, you've solved that problem.
Okay.
With that, so, but again.
But we can all be at that meeting.
The other, the other thing that the council needs to consider, and this may be an agenda item for next month, is what is the scope now of this committee?
Well, maybe all committees need to define their scope.
Right.
All the city, the, the city committees, not the county ones that we're on, but just the.
Because as, as it currently stands, and again, I appreciate the work that's being done. The scope has gone beyond the authority given by the council. And so that becomes the potential issue and sets a precedent going forward. So the council just needs to address that.
Okay, I'll talk to you like after about my thing. My question.
So we need to come up with a.
Your question.
Well, again, here, to be honest, the, the, the committee already had a scope. The scope was to look at alternatives to sewer plants. And, and that was the scope. So if you want to not change that.
We have to have something, right?
Well, yeah, so we, well, it's on the record. We actually have the record of it if we need it. But the point that I'm getting at now is if you want to expand the scope of that committee, you are the body to do that.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Any more on that, on your?
Um, no, I mean, I.
Council approval of going forward on this meeting, we just, or just go for it. Sewer committee's going for it. Sewer committee's going for it.
I'll say this, to the work that's been done, it's never gonna hurt, right? To the, the, the idea that done this work to get the answers going forward, that doesn't do damage. It, it's just, we could have minimized the work because we've duplicated the work, right? And so because that's a lack of communication on the part of all of us. But going, but, but to go forward and do more, my recommendation is define the scope by the council to say what you want to do. As that committee. The point of a committee, right? They don't have any administrative authority. The point of the committee is to make a recommendation to the council, so the council is informed without every one of you. Having to look independently into the situation and then having to wait for an open forum in order to have that discussion. The committee has two members to work that way, come together and make that recommendation. And then the council at that moment can either take a vote, or they can say we need in more information, send the cap, the committee back to do more. And then have it come back and work that process.
Okay?
Yeah. I don't care. Just tell me.
Yeah, but it's kinda why every week I'd say sewer, anything on the sewer, Bruce, and he'd say no.
We're trying to formulate. I guess I, I don't know if I can say anything here or not.
Well, yeah, I don't, we don't.
Have to talk.
So Bruce, but that's the last thing that I want. I don't bring this up to criticize or chastise any council member. I, I think it's a learning experience that we can all have, so we can have that better communication going forward. So if you have a thought, Bruce, please share it. This is the chance to do that.
No, we're just trying to formulate a plan to save the monies. Si- save the city some money. We're just. It's all very innocent.
But, but when you report, but any, you could, you could have been reporting that all the way along. Cause you got five people in open forum, you could have.
Just the same thing.
You could have said, this is what, this is what we're, we're working, this is what we have found out so far, we'll get more next.
Or if there's no progress to you, then.
No progress, yeah.
I wanna make this present to the council as well. Again, in my position, I appreciate everything you guys do. Cause I couldn't do the majority of the work I do without you, so I don't ever want that to go unmentioned. The other part too is, it's not always your responsibility to report for the committee. You have committee members and it's a simple assignment within your committee. So the perfect example here. Is the antiquities committee, like, again, my nine-year-old came to present, right? That shouldn't all fall on Melanie's shoulders, and the way that it works is they form with a committee, a chairperson, a vice chair. And then they, they're able to work that and make assignments. And so again, it's a learning experience for all of us. That's why we're here to, to make it better.
I mean, we will have a report next month, next month.
I think you should finish your report before you change any.
What's that?
I think you should finish the report, I think, before. We change any committee assignments. I mean, what do you think?
So you wanna postpone this?
I mean, we, we can postpone it. Uh, I, I, the way that it was presented to me was that. The report couldn't be completed without some funding mechanisms. And so that's why I got him. And creating a public meeting was the most transparent way to.
So my recommendation, Nico, is, again, it falls on you at this point to, to, when Bob reaches out and says, what are we doing? Say I can't discuss that. It's a Brown Act violation. As we discussed at council, if he wants to watch the recording, he's welcome to do so, even with the advice of our attorney. And those two stay on the committee, they finish it, postpone that, and no communications at this point.
Yeah.
Because that would influence.
Okay.
Serial meeting like. They'll go from one person to another, where you want to talk to them one at a time, that's still a Brown Act. So if it gets to that, or if there were crossover, the people going on with that other uh, committee. Got to where three people were involved. And that was the Brown, the Brown Act was entire, was intended to prevent.
So one person can't have a serial meeting?
No.
One person, one council member could go to, to, I, you go talk to one, one day, and then another council member another day. But you've effectively communicated with two other people, because the, the idea was that, you know, so let's make a deal thing where deals are made in private. Or no, uh, and the Brown Act was first enacted in nineteen fifty-three because it seemed to be a problem back then. I'm still in some of Dave's training here, but. But the idea is, if, if you're gonna have. Decisions involving all five, and instead of public meeting, generally, there's no possibility of Brown Act violation. Because it's all out there.
So how does Bob, how does Bob get involved though?
Brown Act violation is you have off-record discussions that may occur at other times. Or committees where a third council member not on that committee. Uh, gets involved in discussions, that's.
Right, so what it is, is while Bob is not a council member.
Yeah.
There's Bob.
Got apparent authority as a committee member, and then he's going from one to the next, and any conversation he has with you. May bleed over, and so it becomes like he said, she said, or I, I hate that language, but. One may say something and then it's just simply, that's Brown.
But if he wasn't on the committee, it wouldn't be.
Yeah, right, he's just a member of the public, he's welcome to talk to anyone that he wants.
But see, he's what's called a hub. There's Bob talking to Susan, talking to Bruce, talking to you, now you got three people.
And he's my neighbor and he really wants to talk to me about sewer.
Yeah, yeah.
And he, he comes in here to get records from Joyce and he wants to fill me in and I have to go, la, 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 I can't, Bobby can't.
Yeah.
Cause he's enthusiastic and he wants to talk about it.
Yeah.
But we can, we can plan a public meeting though, I mean, I.
Oh, you can, you can, but as long as.
We're not discussing any actual decisions or, or anything.
Unless you're talking about specific funding related to what they're doing.
Problem is, Nico, in that planning of that meeting.
Yeah.
That's through a conversation. So he's made that meeting unattainable right now.
Got it, okay.
That's the issue.
Okay, so we're not having a meeting. I'm not sure.
Well, again, the, 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 the.
No, are, are we on, are we on?
You can have a meeting if Susan steps down, but the problem.
If a, if a council person because of possible explosive information acquired by the Brown. Does not sit in on the decision, participate in the decision, that can avoid a Brown Act violation that might otherwise occur. But again, I think this is a scenario like Dave's gonna discuss during the training, so.
I mean, I can step down from the, I don't have to be.
Well, that's if you wanna step down and, and Nico wants Susan to finish her report, right? Cause that's, that's how this kind of fire got rekindled. Is Nico said, well, what, we need your report, so we can't move forward, so immediately we have to report. So that's a decision for you guys to make as a council and a committee. So at this point, let, let me put it this way, the, the best thing you can do right now is just make that decision as a committee.
Make that decision.
As a committee, so the two of you.
Are you gonna finish the report or are we gonna? Uh, switch members? That's the, those are the two decisions, so. Do you think you could finish the report without having a public meeting?
I don't know, cause we need you.
You do.
We need your input.
Then one of you needs to step down.
Okay.
I mean, I can. Just consider him off the. Off of it totally. I don't understand the whole thing.
I'll work this into my training for the tenth, so hopefully I'll make some mud into some clearer water for him. So it looks like Susan, you remain on the committee with Bob, and Nico's now on it. Are you good with that? Okay.
He'll be happy.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, do we have any energy for council member reports and comments?
Wait, 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 wait. Now that I want on the agenda for next. Um, I want to try to move forward with installing the. I, well, it's probably not the right time, cause of the construction, but the basketball hoop.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's not a big deal.
Okay, I want the basketball.
You want the basketball hoop.
That's on, that's.
We don't even put on the agenda. Order the thing and it'll be installed. Is that fair?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I have a short update on the, um, so I got in contact with AT&T about the, the lines and.
Oh, good job, yeah.
Yeah, they actually gave me a ticket number and they texted me and they said they're going to clear the. Um, brush and the stuff on the lines, so it took a little bit of. Back and forth, cause they're like, where's that added? Where, what service and what's your service address? And I was like.
Don't know.
Yeah, I was like, I just picked a random address right that I thought looked like that, and then they were like, oh, we don't know, and. They're like, we can't go and service every single line. And I was like, well, you, you guys can look at this one, there's a, there's a tree falling on it, like. Go look at it and.
It's live.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, well, the telephone, they are live telephone, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's funny, cause I actually, I was driving, I one time and saw that, and I thought, I just saw a tree online, so I'm like, I'm calling P G D. And the guy was really nice, he came, I was like, that's AT&T here.
Yeah.
But it's amazing, I didn't provide them with an address and he found it.
Yeah. Figured it out. It's like Streambe and Ellie, they're like, is that, is that one word or is that two words? I'm like.
Got you.
You'll find it, it's right there. Picture, take a look at pictures right past Streambe, like, it's right there, yeah.
Okay, I have Dan on request for future agenda items. Help me if I've forgotten anything. Kirk. Regarding, regarding his letter in the fire, in the parking by the fire lane, EV charging, um. What do we, why do I have that on?
Oh, not an agenda item.
You're gonna follow through. Okay. Okay, action, thank you. Uh, basketball hoop, not an action, not an agenda item. AT&T, you're reporting. I only have Kirk. What else is on?
That's it.
That was the only addition.
Basketball.
We're kicking, no, no, we're having a close session.
Close session first.
Okay, and I'm sure that the thousand other things will turn up between now and.
So the other thing I'll report to the council, I have a family issue I have to deal with on the next council meeting.
We're keeping it thin.
So.
Okay.
But I will say this, I am traveling on that day, so if you need me, just call me.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. And with that, add to nine to ten.